Uh, Jenny, if you take the role.
Councilmember Thorson.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Mayor Furlong?
Here.
Councilmember Wong is absent.
Okay. A motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
By Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Then by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? Not all of us in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. It looks like we have a couple of topics, so turn it over to interim city manager, Randall.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
And thank you for the pizza.
Absolutely.
Jeez. It's a treat.
So, the 2022 budget discussion was meant to be left over from yesterday. If you guys had any further questions or wanted to get into more detail about what was talked about after some things kind of sunk in, I know we threw a lot of information at you yesterday, but it was just a chance to, you know, entertain any more questions that you may have to talk about anything further before we move into our next budget session, which will be in about a week, correct? Or so?
Yeah, two weeks, I believe it's.
Two weeks, yeah.
September.
So, and if you don't, that's fine. I just wanted to make that open for that availability.
Uh, so just open it up for discussion then, and?
Yes, any questions you may have, anything further in depth you may want to talk about?
Okay. Anybody got any questions? Councilmember Thorson?
I guess one thing I just will bring up now, last year I forewent my council pay, and I'm willing to do that again in 2022. And we had to make some motion later on in the year, but I don't know if we need to do that again. I'm assuming we do, but that should probably be done before we adopt the final budget in December, but you can go ahead and mark that down again for 2022. Assuming that everyone's okay with it, I guess.
Thank you.
Uh, I would say the EDA, we talked in regards to having a possibility of a, you know, staff time, staff person as part of the EDA, and that might be a broader discussion in regards to, you know, some of the other things that city manager Dudek had done previous. So, I don't know if we can have that discussion now or wait till the new city managers here. I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
That may be a discussion for the new city manager. I know a lot of ideas have been thrown out to potentially do an employee that could be half funded by EDA, half funded by city for any other clerical needs that we may need, but that was pretty wide open at this point, but further discussion could be had for that.
So I think there's a need that we, but again, if, you know, we don't know the city manager, he might take a lot of that role, you know, same as city manager Dudek did, so we don't know. But it was requested from the EDA that we do need some sort of staff time for the EDA.
Yeah, my only question came around a lot of the same thing as Mayor Furlong in reference staffing. I didn't see any additional staffing needs requested from, you know, from the department heads for internal staffing. And I know there were several positions eliminated or not necessarily eliminated, but layoffs took place, and didn't know if that conversation had been had or, and their need wasn't there, and I think Mayor covered off on the EDA's need and ask as well, so.
Well, yeah, that is another conversation. We do have some staff in community development that is part-time currently. We used to have another full-time position that was filled by that. That was a potential topic of discussion that I wouldn't mind having in further budgeting. They are part-time, like I said. They have expressed that they would like to go full-time if that's possible, but I think we, once we get numbers kind of tore down a little bit better, we have an idea if that we can do that. But, um, which would open up, you know, could that person do EDA? Could that person be kept busy full-time with just clerical? It, a lot to the discussion. Wasn't really prepared for that this evening, but that is something I think we could discuss in one of our upcoming budgets with more detail.
So do you see, you know, being the interim, do you see, you know, I guess, not weaknesses, but, you know, there's areas that need more help?
Um, yes. On the community development side, we did have more employees on this side. There were two that have recently left the city, and we have, right now, we have two full-time and then one part-time doing clerical. So, the need is kind of there, and I've spoken with the other employees in the department, and there has been some concern about some of the workload and just being able to, other people being able to take their vacations, or whether or not they're off sick or what have you, to cover those needs when somebody else is gone. So, we can talk about that further, and once we get more detail and further budgeting discussions.
Talk about it later, and?
Yeah, I don't, I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared to have that conversation this evening, but I can get more information together for that.
So I think we should probably open that up to some sort of discussion in regards to, you know, what are your findings, you know, as being interim? And maybe, maybe we do wait for the, you know, the new city manager to make that also distinction, what his needs will be.
Correct, yes.
We're kind of in a limbo right now.
We are.
What our needs are, and what you see is, you know, could be different than what the new city manager.
Absolutely.
Will see, so. And, you know, as a finance director too, you know, I don't know if you see any needs at all. You know, we're asking you too, you know, what are your needs and what are weaknesses in our departments right now? I guess we won't know that until you have discussions with the department heads, and, but maybe you've already had those discussions.
I've had some. I think more detail needs to be brought into the conversation, though.
Yes, Mayor and councilmembers, Brian and I briefly talked today, and our next round will be to re-meet with all the department heads. There's some questions on just some of the budgetary line items, and then in addition, we'll be talking about staffing levels to make sure that they're adequate or where they're seeing any needs or shifts that need to be made. So that'll be our next round in preparation to coming back to September 8th.
Okay. Councilmember Thorson?
I may be mistaken, but I thought Lisa Wong asked that question yesterday, and we were told that your initial conversations with department heads in putting together the budget that you have now is that, you know, there is no need for additional staffing. Is that correct? In hearing that yesterday, or?
Councilmember Thorson, you're absolutely correct. When we talked to the police outside of their need that's happening this year and outside of the community service officer addition, which we did have in the proposed budget, the fire, police, public works, again, outside of the change that was discussed yesterday, and then also be brought up at the city council, that's kind of where that was at. The components that really need to be discussed and where Brian's kind of talking about is really looking at that community development side, the, both the HRA and the Economic Development Authority component to it, and if there's staffing support that needs to be brought in there. And I know there's been some different kind of discussions, whether that's going to be something that's going to be filled by the next city manager and/or there'd be an assistant city manager that would fulfill those duties. That's still yet to be determined, but I do think that there needs to be more of a dialogue with that. That wasn't really focused on the other department heads when we had met.
Okay. And that's probably more on me. We, you know, that's in talking with directors of departments. There really is no community development director per se anymore, so it's kind of a little bit of an afterthought, so that's on me. But it was just one of the things to talk about, because there's lots of things to that. I mean, the idea that's been thrown around for an assistant to the city manager when they get here as well, so they could fill some of those needs, so there's a lot to that.
Sure. Okay.
Anything more on the budget then? Anybody else talk about the budget, or?
I'm good.
Good, good.
Well, I just had a chance to meet briefly today with finance director and just kind of reiterate what I talked to him about, just how this is new for us as a council to this open gov and this interface, and, you know, like, in the past, we've just gotten stacks of papers that, you know, the second they're handed to us, they're telling us, oh, yeah, page 100 of 350, ignore this number, you know. So there's changes as soon as we get it, and it's kind of an overwhelming daunting task when you just get stacks of paper with numbers on them. And so, you know, this is something that personally I've had to take a little more time to adjust to and get to, because it is so interactive, and you can just dive deeply into all these things. So, I mean, it's a learning curve for us as well, and so I personally just need a little more time to look into that. But I think initially, the budget numbers that are, you know, being proposed, I think are not too devastating, shocking, or anything like that. So it's, I think we're on the right path here, and it's not like in previous years where there's been an initial request of something like 29%. And we got to work our way down from there. But, so this just seems a lot more manageable, given the fact too that you're learning in the new role too, there's a lot there to pick up and that Brian's stepping in to fill the void here until we get a more permanent replacement, so.
I know we have plenty of time here, so, you know, as new finance director, like Councilmember Thorson said, we always had different ideas how this was brought to the council, how the budget was brought to the council, and, you know, how do you see moving forward, maybe next year? You know, you're kind of jumped right into it, you know, as you got hired. Do you see yourself maybe changing, or do you see yourself bringing a different format to the council? Or? Are you too not sure yet?
No, I, no, I do actually have a response for that. Part of it's going to play out with the city manager that's hired in their style.
Sure.
Many, you know, municipalities will have the city manager present their proposed budget and kind of go through it. The one component that I really enjoyed coming here was the transparency component to it, and I wish I would have been here a little bit earlier. You started the budget process well in advance in May. It just took us two months to get to the next step. But I would like to have the ability to have more dialogue with the city council and even going to Councilmember Thorson's and looking at various line items and asking questions. But my style is more that I would like to be able to present options and kind of look at some of the bigger, I'm going to say, hits that are coming on the city and taking, and it's going to take a little while to know some of the other discussions that are taking place, obviously, and then show what those cost impacts would be. And then ultimately, it's the city council that needs to make those tough decisions. But I really enjoy the interaction with the city council, and to me, I want us to be as transparent internally and externally with the residents all the way through the whole entire process. So, to answer in a more simplistic way, the budget process started with ample time. It just should have continued, and we should have really been, at this point, really diving into all of the budget details and well past that point, but.
Yep. I think the big document too that's important is the capital improvement plan too, how we.
Absolutely.
Fund all that and.
Yep.
Timing and everything.
Absolutely. And, yes, and we need to have some discussions coming into, you know, once we get through the budget processes, is really looking at, you know, there's an established policy on the fund balance for the general fund, but we really need to look at that fund balance as far as it's concerned for our internal service funds and our proprietary funds, looking at the capital improvement plans and the infrastructural needs that are there to make sure that we're, you know, capable of moving forward, and then have those tough dialogues on some of our dependencies. And I've kind of mentioned a few of them yesterday, the local government aid. It's always an unpredictability to it of what we're actually going to get, but that could have a huge impact. You have to remember every, you know, $55,000 equals 1% increase in the levy. So, we need to be able to be looking at some of those internal components. The reliance on electric, which has moved down through the years. But do we move it further and then adequately funding our equipment and our capital improvement plan for infrastructural needs that are coming down the road? So, we have a lot of work to go. I'd like us to have those harder dialogues to kind of set some parameters. I kind of also talked yesterday about sometime, you know, the fiscal disparities impact that it has when you reduce a rate and the impact that it'll have on the actual dollars that you'll receive the next year, holding everything else constant. There's kind of a balance that we need to kind of look at, and it's not, in my mind, it's not always driven by the bottom line of the levy that's being passed on to the residents. There's a well balance between what the city needs, how do you position yourself for the future, and so forth. So, I think there's a lot of benchmarks that we have to establish in the upcoming year before we hit into the next budget cycle.
Good, good. All right. If there's nothing else on the budget, we'll move on to Leah.
Uh, yes, ladies and gentlemen, here's members of council. I am here this evening to help assist with the charitable gambling ordinance update. So, the purpose of us returning to this discussion was just to clarify what our ordinance currently regulates and what is new ordinance would be approved for the city. And so, just in general, gambling is registered, or it's licensed often through the state of Minnesota. So there's a separate licensing scheme that is taking place concurrently to any city licensing. And just to try to simplify things, the city is really only focusing on what's called lawful gambling under state law, and what that generally means is charitable gambling. And so, in preparation for this evening's discussion, I also reached out to our city clerk to just get a better understanding of what organizations are currently obtaining gambling permits from the city of North St. Paul. And just to give you, I don't know if she ended up forwarding that list over to you for review, but for example, there's a number of PCA or parent teacher associations on that list. There's religious organizations, there's fraternal organizations such as Musloes would be one. And then there's other nonprofit organizations such as caring for cats would be one of them. So the only organizations that are generally applying for these permits through the city are going to be what are considered charitable organizations. They're religious in nature, fraternal or nonprofit organizations. So I hope that helps clarify some of the questions surrounding the ordinance itself. And then truly, the draft of the ordinance is designed just to update our current existing framework to comport with state law and make sure we're updating our city ordinance accordingly. I don't know if you saved or kept a copy of the original memo that I provided to the city council on, would have been in preparation for the first workshop meeting, but in that memorandum, I outlined some of the options that we have as a city to consider anytime we're implementing this kind of ordinance. For example, the city has the option to impose a gambling tax of up to 3% on these charitable gambling organizations. That gambling tax is supposed to only capture the cost of the city operating the administrative portion of the gambling licensing or permitting system. And then any additional or excess amount that we tax in excess of our administrative costs, we actually would, by state law, have to refund that excess cost that we have collected back to those organizations. So that's an example of an option that the city has. It's not something that the city currently has in place. So, as part of the draft ordinance, I tried to keep elements of what our existing framework does, and I did not include that in the draft ordinance, but I just wanted to flag that as just a way to, you know, let you all know that you, as a city, have the option to implement these things if you see it fit as part of this discussion.
So Leah, that would be us then having our own fund, and people would come to us, and we would be able to give out, where in the past, we give it control to the charitable organizations, that their discretion goes out to who they want to give it out to?
Yes, so that's kind of a separate element. So there's the local gambling tax that you can impose up to 3%. You also have an option as a city to maintain a separate fund, where you would have a mandatory component for any proceeds that an organization would obtain through the gambling. They would have to contribute a certain percentage of those funds to a city maintained fund, and then the city would only be able to spend that fund in certain ways. It could include on public safety measures, so it can be relatively broad in terms of what the spending could be. If we did something like that, then there is a state oversight component to that. We would be reporting all of our expenditures to the state, and then those would be publicly available certainly as part of the process, but the state would evaluate to make sure that we're making sure our expenditures from that fund comport with state law. So, we don't have something like that set up currently. So the draft ordinance does not include a component for that, but that's another good point in just in terms of this discussion. If the city does feel that a fund in that way would best serve the interests of this community, then you certainly could consider implementing that as part of this ordinance. Thank you. And so with that, I do want to just, if there's any questions about the memorandum I've provided or just sort of the discussion we've been having so far, please let me know if I can assist with any of those questions.
So, you're, uh, so what are we doing? Are we amending the ordinance then?
Correct.
To just updating the ordinance then?
Yes, this would just be updating the ordinance. You know, one way our ordinance was a bit outdated is that it sort of suggested that all gambling organizations would have to apply for a permit through the city versus just simply the charitable gambling organizations. In practice, only the charitable gambling organizations have been applying for permits, but this updates the language just to show that the city's review process is just to assist with those charitable gambling ordinance applications. And then there's also a separate component here that I should mention. Anytime the state provides a gambling license, they also issue what's called a premises permit, and that is something that the city does get some review of. And so what would happen is that the state would let us know this organization has applied for a gambling license through the state of Minnesota. You, as a city, have the right to review it for a premises permit, and the ordinance that you have before you provides some criteria for the city to use to determine should you approve or deny that premises permit. And then it gives you, as the city council, the opportunity to review that, and then you would pass a resolution either approving or denying that premises permit. That information would go back to the state of Minnesota, and then they would continue their licensing process. So it is a complex process.
Yeah, it is a complex, I was, to me, what, hold on. To me, myself, I would not want the city to get involved in the gambling part where we have, we have people, organizations coming here and asking us. To me, that gets, it gets, can be pretty, you know, you're denying one or accepting one or whatever. I don't want to, I don't want to get into that. Councilmember Thorson?
I was just going to say, an example of the premise permit, when I was on the fire department, we had a couple of fundraisers, and we were selling raffle tickets to give away a four-wheeler, but we draw, we drew the winner at the event which was held in another city. So we had to apply for a premise permit, and, you know, we were learning about this stuff that was going on, and there was a potential that the premise permit wouldn't get in front of the council to be approved, and we had already printed the ticket, and so it just, you know, we were just trying to raise money for the fire department. And, you know, it just seems like this is adding another unnecessary level of, you know, burden on people conducting charitable events and charitable gambling. And, you know, the requirement to add up to 3% gambling tax, you know, I think it, what did it say? Our current, we only charge $100 fee. I mean, it's pretty minimal. Especially now with all this online stuff, is there even? I mean, I don't think the goal would be to help recoup the software costs through gambling. That would probably take centuries to do at that rate, but, and then this 10% net proceeds tax on top of it. I mean, the whole point of these organizations is that they're trying to raise money for their cause or for a specific event, and that we would, you know, take a handling fee or a 10% tax, or, you know, it just kind of seems excessive and defeats the purpose of, you know, having an event and raising money if you got to give it to the state and give it to the city and give it to the county and give, you know, it's just kind of like everyone's got to get their fingers in there before the end result gets to, you know, paying for grandma's medical bills or whatever the thing, the deal is. So, I wouldn't be support, I'm in supportive of updating our ordinance to come into compliance with whatever we need to do, because, but to add all of these extra fees and stuff, I'm, it's not something I would support.
And, you know, on that point about the premises permit, what I can do is reach out to the state of Minnesota and their gambling oversight to see if there's any way for us as a city to simplify our part of that, because my basic understanding is that the state will still continue to reach out to the city to ask if the city is approving the application. And so I wonder if there is some way for us to kind of simplify that even within our ordinance. So I could follow up on that issue, you know, to make sure that's more simplified. And then that feedback, just in general, is helpful, just to know, you know, are we looking to be more like other cities who have imposed the gambling tax or set up these separate funds, or are we looking to lessen sort of these administrative burdens on the charitable organizations that are trying to operate, you know, the gambling for charitable purposes? So, what I can do is just take another look and see if there's any other aspects of the ordinance to simplify. The one thing I did want to bring up is that our current ordinance does have a requirement that the organizations who receive a permit have to expend a certain percentage of their funds in our trade area. Our trade area is, you know, set by ordinance, and that's kind of outlined in the memo that you have before you today. The current ordinance indicates that the trade area includes the municipal boundaries of North St. Paul, Oakdale, Maplewood, and all other areas within the ISD 622 boundary. So that definition I kept for the draft of this ordinance, but I guess the general, the more general question for you all is whether or not, as a city, you want to mandate that the funds be expended in that trade area as part of the ordinance. Currently, I believe our ordinance mandates that 50% of the proceeds from any gambling event would need to be. event would need to be spent in that community area. That component is in the draft ordinance, but that's just a question in general as we go through kind of this process. Is that number, you know, is that something that the city sees as working well currently? Or do we want to, to look at that number again and see what makes sense for the city moving forward?
But I think that, I think it's, is working currently because we haven't heard any complaints from any of our gambling sites. I did pull a list from, I think it's a state and it just FYI for the council. It tells you what organization is in each establishment for the nonprofit. And the VFW is the VFW, that's their, their own. Sidewinders has Merrick, Inc. I don't think, I don't know if that's Merrick Community Service, I think it's Merrick, Inc. And Roddy's is Merrick, Inc. Polar Lounge is Merrick, Inc. Newman's is Merrick, Inc. And American Legion is American Legion. So that is kind of interesting how we don't have a really diverse. Cause I don't know if gambling is the same as it was, you know, 10 years ago or 20 years ago, I don't think it's as profitable as, as it was. I don't, I don't know. I guess I really don't have a, a good handle on that, you know, should we, is Merrick, Inc., are they hindering other organizations from coming in? You know, are more non, one, more than one nonprofit, you know, being able to get all the licenses in the city? I don't know, I don't, I don't have a handle on that, I don't know.
Well, I think, cause in the last, they didn't go through with it, but last year I thought the Tartan area hockey booster club was going to sponsor the pole tabs at Newman's.
And they pulled out.
And then they didn't do it. And I think someone, I can't remember who they were, I think it was the North, North St. Paul League Association used to be the, the one at Roddy's because we'd always joke around, that's how we justify playing pole tabs is we're going to donate to the athletic association. But then they were out of there for a while and they didn't even have pole tabs other than the state ones, the E tab, the electronic tabs. So I think Merrick just kind of stepped up to say, we'll, we'll run it. And I think some of these places, they, they like to have that because I don't know if it attracts people to come and do that stuff. I think it's just more of a fun thing to do while you're there. But maybe, maybe some of these organizations that traditionally did it got out of it because they're just, they were getting cut off with all these other city taxes, it wasn't just worth it. Cause they do have to employ someone to sit there and do it. And then they have accounting regulations to follow and all that, so. I don't know, I think I'm just, I'm supportive of updating it to be in compliance with state statute, but being as less involved as possible and not adding any additional financial burden to these organizations who are trying to raise money, especially after this last year and a half where there's been, you know, mandatory closures of bars and these kinds of events that, you know, they're just probably struggling as much as anyone else.
Oh yeah, I don't think they have near as much revenue as what, what we think they have.
Well, I appreciate that feedback. I'll certainly go through everything once more, just to make those updates and get that general, hopefully simplify the general process. And just so, you know, council is aware, you know, this only, you know, arose as we were going through the open gov system. We were updating the applications with city staff and noticed that some of the old language in the current ordinance needs to be updated to comport with state law. So at least I'm not aware of any, anything about our current system or our current framework that isn't working well for those organizations. You know, certainly city staff would be better equipped to know that, but I haven't been alerted to any issues that those organizations have had with the current framework. So we can take that current framework and just update it so it comports with state law and then hopefully it'll work well into the future for those organizations.
You're saying 50% has to be in that trade area, the other 50% can be anywhere?
The other 50% could be anywhere. And I guess that's a good point in terms of, you know, we're working with, well, and we're working with charities that sometimes may be making expenditures that benefit those outside of that trade area. But for the most part, as in terms of our current list, we do have PTA associations, we have charities that exist in North St. Paul. And so as a practical matter, most likely their, their expenditures are done locally, but, but they're not mandated by our ordinance to expend all of the funds here.
Do we, we don't know what, what they, is there a list out there that shows who they give the money to?
So the state does some of that record keeping. So it depends on, you know, the level of communication they're having with the state. There may be information there. In terms of, you know, us asking that they keep records or submit records to the city to verify compliance with that, we certainly could do that as part of this process. You know, I hesitate to, I guess, suggest that without additional input from city staff to know what's feasible on their end, but that is something we could do to just ensure compliance with that system.
You know, my only concern is that, that the other 50%, you know, out of the area, we don't know where that's going to. I mean, I don't, like I said, I, I don't know much about the gambling side of where all the money goes to, because we leave it on there and distribute the money. Whether or not we care where that other 50% goes, you know, outside of our trade, trade area, but, you know, maybe we do need to kind of know where it is, that we know that's going to a cause and it's not going somewhere that, I don't think it, you know, I'm not implying that it is or any, but I have no idea. So can you like change it to 75% in the trade area and 25%? But, but again, I don't, I'd rather have a, a meeting with the, the organizations to find out if that, you know, maybe they're already given 100% in the trade area, you know, I don't know. Again, I, I don't know what that number is.
Does that too, I mean, I'm, maybe I'm misunderstanding this, but let's just say, for example, someone's going to have a benefit at the Legion and they rent out the hall and it's to raise money for, you know, medical expenses and this individual happens, you know, they, maybe they're in a car accident in Woodbury. But they want to have it, the event at the North St. Paul Legion. But because they live outside of the trade area, they can't conduct, they can't do it there because they'd be spending the money, they'd have to spend at least the way it's currently written, 50% here in the trade area. So maybe is that prohibiting certain events from taking place and hindering, you know, charitable events from happening at the VFW or the Legion or elsewhere in the city? I don't know, if, if, does that make sense, you know?
That, that makes sense, but I, I know that they have events, you know, for outside organizations and I've, I've never heard that, you know, the organization only gets 50% if they're from outside the area or, I don't know.
I don't know either.
And it may be that sometimes the events they're holding don't fall under the definition of lawful gambling and they're sort of more fundraising events that may be outside of the purview of this ordinance. But to answer your earlier question, the state law does permit you to require that 100% of their profits be spent in the trade area. The former ordinance only required 50%, but you do have flexibility with what makes sense for the city in that number. Those are all good things to consider as you work through what makes sense from a city perspective moving forward. Well, if, you know, if there are any other questions, you know, please let me know. I know it's a lot to digest, these are kind of complex ordinances. What I'll do is work to simplify this one to be more consistent with what we currently have. And then if you do have additional feedback or questions, certainly let city staff know and they'll get a message to me and I can prepare another memorandum to address any of those concerns.
It seems to be working right now, you know, the ordinance. I don't, I don't see a problem with, and I, like I said, I haven't heard a complaint from the organizations. I just don't want to get into the business of having to give out dollars and have a fight that we're not giving to someone and somebody else got it and somebody else didn't get it or whatever. I just don't want to be in that situation.
Certainly. So the next step would be, I can, you know, work to simplify the ordinance a bit more and then perhaps we would place it, depending on what city staff would want to do, we could place it on a council agenda next unless we feel that another work session would be needed to address any kind of concerns. Or if there's, I guess, questions from a, a level that we'd want to reach out to organizations that currently do hold these events, that we may want to ask or gather that information before we move forward with the process further.
I think keeping it simple right now, only because of COVID and these organizations, you know, the track record right now for 2020 and 2021 is probably isn't that, that great. You know, as we move forward, you know, 2022, 23 might be, you know, a better time to really look at maybe the percentages and maybe have a meeting with the organizations, because that could be changed at any time. Correct?
Makes sense, yeah, it certainly could be. We could amend it in the future if things change. And, you know, hopefully, you know, the goal is ultimately that we'll have a, an application in our open gov system, which will be easier for organizations to work with submitting rather than our current paper forms that we would normally rely on, especially in light of COVID and, and not knowing what may happen with that. It's nice to have that electronic system more accessible to organizations as they move forward with these events to the extent, you know, that they can hold them under the current circumstances.
Okay, good. Any questions for Leah?
I just had one question for, from a clarity standpoint. In our packet, it's page eight and page nine. Bottom of page eight, in bold print, it says, "List of municipalities with 10% lawful gambling fund," and that's underlined. Page nine is then a list of 140 or 150 cities within the state of Minnesota. And I don't understand, those that are underlined have the 10%? Are all of the cities listed charged to have, take 10%?
So that is a report that's available on the state website. And what I can tell you is that the underlined cities simply have a hyperlink to them so that you can click on that particular city and gather more information from that. But this is a, it is a full list of all the reports that the state has received from those who have the, sorry, I'm just rereading the state webpage, webpage here. It's, I'm sorry, it's been a little bit of time since I've looked at this webpage. You know, I can clarify that for you. I think that it's, that, that city has the 10% contribution fund. And then all of these cities have the local gambling regulatory tax. But I'll carefully review that and just give you a clarification with the updated ordinance once we're.
Does everyone see that blue hyperlink?
Mm-hmm.
If you click on that, it goes to the state. And then on the far left-hand column, it says the 3% lawful gambling tax. And then on the center column, there's all those cities that have the 10% and you can click on the cities and it opens up. But you click on that White Bear Lake 2019, it opens up that LG 500 form that looks like White Bear Lake charges 2%. And in 2019, they collected, or they had a fund balance of 109,000. In the, in fiscal year 2019, they have the VFW, American Legion, the Lions Club, the Wiper Hockey Association, Wiper Basketball Association, American, MOS. They collected $56,000 through their 2%. Then there's a page that calculates what their fee is, it was 6,000. So they had to refund, you know, the difference in that. And so their staff time is just taking up calculating the refund. Most of this looks like, even specifically state, they have a detailed, their finance department, their finance director had to spend extra hours figuring out issues with the LG 500 for previous year's work to, to change regulatory tax paid by organizations. So it's just kind of like, why are we doing this?
We'll give it to Dan.
We're, we're collect, we're, we're collecting money to, to, to charge you a fee because we're requiring you to do that, but then we're going to refund the access. So why don't we just not collect, why don't we just not charge you a fee? Then we don't have to do all this work. They have all these hours spent on just these forms they could have been spending it doing other things within their finance department, I suppose, but.
And I, thank you for that explanation. And, you know, just I had a moment to review the website more carefully. And that list that I provided in your memorandum is the full list of all of those cities who require that 10% lawful gambling contribution fund. So that's the separate city fund that you have set up for any net profits. That's 10% of net profits from any gambling organization. However, I'm not sure why some cities are hyperlinked to their reports that, you know, and then some do not provide those reports, I suppose. But if you do go to that website that's provided in your memorandum, you can click on the city and then see also the report that they complete or some of them have completed that shows how they then spent that 10% fund that they set out.
Thank you. I, this is the way I understood it as well. So there's, so notably, there's more cities on the list than there are not on the list from a, from a percentage standpoint. And I may need clarity again in the direction of there is fundraising and there is charitable gambling. So a fundraising event that may take place at the VFW is not a charitable gambling situation. So that 10% doesn't apply to a fundraising event where it would apply to a charitable gambling event.
Well, just to clarify again, our, we don't have that 10% requirement. That's that, that special fund that they would set up. But you're right, there are certain types of fundraising that could be gambling. So for example, if you have a bingo game and the proceeds of that are all going to a particular, a particular charitable purpose, then it's still, you know, going to fall under our definition of what we view as lawful gambling. But in general, if you're simply holding a fundraiser to support a particular person's medical expenses, you may not have it set up in a way that is gambling. So you may just have it set up as sort of a donation process to provide funds to the person in need. And in that case, that kind of an event would not fall under the need to get a permit and, and do those sorts of things or contribute any of their proceeds to a city fund.
I, I, I just feel that it's a potential revenue income for the city that, that we should consider taking a look at. And again, it's not to take a look at taking away funding from what we, what is a, you know, a charity or a, a, you know, a fundraising event, but, you know, to, to down towards the avenue of, you know, this, some of these, some of these organizations are for profit. And so to, to, you know, to make sure the city gets a cut as we sit down during our budget process, it's another potential for potential income and revenue that doesn't necessarily impact, it's a user fee, in my opinion, as opposed to a fee assessed to, you know, all of the residents with, within the state or within the city.
Is it a revenue or is it charitable? We would, we'd have to give that out as a charitable donation.
But we then in turn could use it, so 50% of it can go to special funding, whether it be for the police, the fire, or anything along that direction. And then the other 50%, we can, could we use it towards a park fund? Could we use it towards? Could we use it towards a development of something else within the city?
So there is a, a long list of sort of items in our state law that tell you what you can use those funds for. What I could do is kind of put together that list for you to take a look at. One of those items would be public safety potentially. You know, and that's something you can work through as a council to decide what makes sense for the city and what's in the best interest of the city. It's not, you know, my role to tell you one way or the other, but what I can do is provide you with the language in case you want to consider implementing a fund and then also just the list of what that fund could be used for if you, if you do decide as a city that you want to set up a fund like that. And it might be helpful for the council to take a look at that website and then also look at the current reports from other municipalities that outline what they are using those funds for in the event that you're interested in pursuing that option.
Because the funding wouldn't go to necessarily the general budget, but it does collect into another bucket that we can use towards other areas.
Can you just use that for city expenses then? Or would you have to be all exclu, inclusive or exclusive for other organizations?
So any of the 10, that special fund you set up has to be expended for particular purposes. There's sort of a laundry list of, I think maybe it's probably 10 to 15 items of things that would be permissible for the use of the fund, but it wouldn't be as simple as operating your general fund and using that as you would your general fund.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
And then my, my other question is, bingo is kind of a, falls, falls under a different bucket or does that fall in here as well? You see local establishments having purse bingo and turkey bingo and where, where does that fall in? Because I think that I also read in there that the, the proceeds can't exceed $10 or something, the winnings?
So that's a good question. So there's, bingo is sort of a complicated topic in that there are certain bingo games that are exempted from any type of regulation. So for example, your bingo game that you would see at a, a senior nursing home that frequently take place. As there's certain criteria that they meet, one of them being that they don't have prizes exceeding the $10 limit. There's other types of very specific criteria they have to meet in order to be exempted. But if they meet those exemptions, then that kind of a bingo game is not applying for a city permit or a state license and you're not going to have that kind of level of oversight over them. Our ordinance, if, if adopted by the city council, would make it clear that anytime a, a senior center or nursing home is operating a bingo game, that we're not going to be having the city oversight over that particular game, just to make sure we're not running afoul of any of the state laws that we're, we have to comply with. So, so that's a good question. Bingo is a little complicated. Sometimes it does have to go through this permitting process. Other times it would not need to.
Councilmember Dawson?
Yeah, I was just gonna say too, just because you have a fundraiser doesn't mean there's not necessarily gambling going on. There's certain games I think that are exempt, like dice games, but then there are others that, like if you're selling raffle tickets, then depending on certain things, you still have to apply for charitable gambling permit and, and that stuff. And I'm just trying to, you know, again, no expert on this, looking through just some of the examples on here. I mean, this, I, I don't see this as a revenue source. This is just a, it's the city saying, you know, you're, we're going to take 10% and then we're going to determine where this money gets spent. But in some examples here, I think I'm looking at the city of Ramsey here. It looks like they were, they had some project. They must have been building an amphitheater because they had a bunch of expenses that they were listing for that. So it's in the city park or there's playground equipment. So, you know, but do these cities also have a park fund and a park dedication fund like we do? I don't know. Yes, it could certainly be used that way, but I, I don't really see the need, you know. I mean, if we have specific projects that are coming up and that we would want to look at this as a funding mechanism, then sure, it's probably something we could look into, but just to do it because we can, I don't think that's something we should look into and consider unless, again, there's something specific and a reason for it.
Kind of interesting because now cities are able to charge a sales tax. They're going out and I know City of Oakdale just got approved for a half percent? I think it's a half percent sales tax. So, and that money is going back to the city for, you know, your roads or whatever. I mean, the capital improvements, you know, I think cities, as we are, trying to find, you know, money to improve the roads and, you know, some of our parking lots and, you know, we've got a lot of, lot of improvements that need to be done. And I think this is, like you say, an avenue for parks or whatever. If people don't have that ability to, to do it, this is one way to, to raise the revenue for that.
You know, and one thing I would just, you know, say is that it may be useful if the city is thinking about that of just to maybe do some kind of data collection in terms of those organizations that we have, you know, coming to us now. I mean, could we find out, you know, what would creating a 10% net profit fund really be? How big would that fund be? Might help, I guess, better answer the question of whether or not it makes sense for the city to move forward with it. I don't know the answer to that for North St. Paul based on the organizations you currently have who do this kind of charitable gambling. But that's just one thing perhaps to think about or think through as we work through this.
And that number you can get because you know exactly what these charitable organizations are, are making. And if you take that percentage, you can extrapolate that to the city and get that number.
Potentially. I guess I would say I don't know if the state is collecting that information from them. I mean, for example, for our parent teacher associations, I'm not sure what level of record keeping there is accessible publicly, but perhaps there is. And then we need to know, you know, not only the funds that they may be receiving through just donation or various fundraisers that are not lawful gambling versus those that they're receiving because they're engaging in this lawful gambling. How much of a profit are they getting from those events? And then only 10% of that will go into this fund. It may be even helpful to kind of look at maybe similar sized cities on this list of cities who are maintaining the 10% fund and then seeing how much those funds really are, you know, and perhaps that might help us to better understand what, what amount of money we would be accruing to this fund.
So about seven years ago, I got that data that was available. That we know exactly what each organization for the lawful gambling.
Oh, that's helpful. Then.
They know what, they know what they're getting. The state has that, has that number.
Okay. I can reach out to the state because I know I was going to check in with them just regarding the premises permit process as well and just see if they can clarify that for us too, hopefully.
Okay, good. All right. Anything else for Leah?
Well, thank you very much for your feedback and I will keep working on this and we'll hopefully get it in a, in good shape soon for the city council to be able to review once more. And I'll put together a memorandum just addressing any of the final questions that we don't have full answers to this evening. So.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Can we hold our HRA meeting now or no?
Uh, depends on what time you noticed your HRA meeting for.
Well, what do we got? Like 20 minutes?
Half hour.
Could we?
About 20 minutes.
Yeah, because we got to give them time to stop. Could we maybe jump back into the budget discussion and maybe discuss something specific like parking?
Sure.
A little bit?
Yeah.
So I had a chance to read the EDA minutes from last meeting in July and they, the, the topic was parking, you know, because of the, you know, the apartment complex that's going in and, and you know, the potential for redevelopment. It seems like, you know, this is something that's always a concern, you know, especially when they have events like the car show and other things. And I guess, you know, and just driving around, looking at our current parking lots that we have, they're just miserable. They're rundown. There's, you know, weeds growing. I mean, the, the one across the street before it was used as a staging area. It's just, it's an unimproved surface. If it's raining, it's a muddy mess. The sidewalk in front of it's just a disaster. So it's like, you know, maybe we need to look at how we're going to utilize these public spaces. And if, if it is for parking, we need to get a plan in place and a timeline and how we're gonna fix them up. Because I think that might be a part of the problem that people don't want to utilize the public parking just because it's just not, you know, not really well maintained. I think if we, you know, even the, even the parcels that we may want to someday develop that the city owns, kind of similar to, you know, what went on with the downtown there with the old city hall. I mean, the hope was that someone would come in and develop it right away, but it sat for, you know, well over 10 years. And Shifsky's came in and donates all that money to do that impervious parking lot. And, and to me, that got a lot of positive usage and people utilize it during the car show for the, the events. And then during the week, it was a nice thing. And then it was short-lived because then the development happened. So maybe if it's something even like that where it's, it serves a purpose to serve as a public parking, but knowing it could go away as temporary, but still, you know, we can't just, in my opinion, leave these unimproved lots that are just kind of not attractive for people to utilize and use. So I don't know what people's thoughts are about maybe putting a plan together for our existing ones that we have, maintaining those.
We, we did talk about that at the EDA tonight in regards to the parking lots and, you know, the one behind K&amp;J is, you know, are one of our biggest parking lots and that's going to cost, you know, a lot of money to, to do. But I think, you know, it should be a priority for us to, to look at that. We don't know what's underneath it for electrical. I mean, I think Brian, you talked about maybe burying some lines over there. We have that grant for possible charging station over there. But I think, you know, that spot over there is going to be beneficial for the whole downtown if we improve that, especially if there's the, the new restaurant coming in and any new business or whatever. I mean, that's, to me, it should be a definitely a big priority for us. But we did talk about that and identified, yeah, the parking is, we, we got to identify that.
And, and the downtown too, I mean, there, so there's a public parking behind Sandberg Mortuary that's connected to the old Foster Autobody. You know, it's the high-traffic flooring. And that's, you know, that's utilized heavily during funerals and, and stuff, but maybe not so much other times, but that's one too, that's just kind of looks like it's been neglected for a while. Then there's the old medical building next to Sidewinders and in between there that, you know, is just kind of a fill-in from when the building was demoed. And there's really kind of in the park, in the sidewalk in front of it too has issues. And then right across the street here too, I mean, I think those, those three in, well, I would, yeah, the one behind K&amp;J too is obviously a big priority. But I think if we could put some sort of plan together on, if we were going to designate those as our main ones to look at, how much it would cost, I mean, what are the, the unknowns potentially if there's soil issues or whatever. I mean, I don't, do you have to do something like that if you're just making a parking lot? Are you required to do soil testing and all that stuff?
Yes. So we are, through the meeting we just had, there were, we talked about looking at WSB and looking into, especially the lot behind K&amp;J more, which it's, it's our largest lot. It can accompany more people. It's just very old and, but that lot, these are not small dollar items. So it, as this part of the CIP, we've looked at these lots, that could be in the neighborhood of 800-plus thousand dollars to redo a lot like that because there's, there are storms through underneath it. It's been just kind of resurfaced over time and, and potholes fixed to the point where it needs to be completely redug up, get good soils back underneath it. We need to replace the lighting that's in there. Not only just the underground wiring, but the lights themselves. So some of these require a bit of work and a bit of construction time to get them to where they need to be.
And then there was a parcel that was purchased, but there's a redemption period. It's the, the old drive-through liquor store. Do we have any updates on what the status of that? And I think that was a redemption period this month here coming up? Couple days, isn't it or?
We've got another week and we'll know. I believe it's the 23rd.
22nd?
22nd?
I think it was. It was 22nd.
And the whole premise behind that acquisition was to kind of tie that into that back parking and utilize that space to as additional parking? Is that still the plan for that parcel or has there been some other development interest or?
That has certainly been the option that's been leaned on the most, but it's not set in stone as of yet.
And I believe that's the WSB plan is to, how does that tie in? Make a plan for the council to make, you know, what is it? Plan one, plan two, you know, what it, different ways of how that's going to look, you know, some green area or whatever, parking, or parking benches, benches, you know, for sitting. But it would be an entrance, you know, and exit from, from that parking lot on a seventh street.
Whether walking or driving.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, no, Councilmember Dawson, I, yeah, I agree. We need a, a plan and, and I think, you know, the big one is, is behind K&amp;J. That's, that's going to be the, the big one that I think will have the big impact for the downtown.
But as far as other potential parking, I mean, we're kind of, it's limited, right? I mean, there's not like, so that's where, you know, like across the street, I mean, the city owns that and there's one building still up that's being utilized by the toy shelf, but you know, that seems like it's the proximity. Well, and if, that's also kind of connected to the parking lot behind Newman's and Roddy's. That also was one, we forgot about that one. Forgot about that one. That's in the same kind of, it just kind of disrepair and, you know, it's kind of like, I don't know. It, if, if that's a, and, and I think in the past, we did have some study and they were looking, it was like a parking study and there was potentially some proposal to build some sort of ramp, but it was going to be millions of dollars. I don't know. I mean, I think, you know, parking is a good problem to have, but at the same time, you know, it is a problem. And if, if we already have limited spaces and we're holding those for redevelopment and we're holding back from, you know, actually doing it right and fixing it up and putting actual paved spots and curbs and lined parking, you know, I don't think we're really helping ourselves out. It's just kind of making it worse, you know. Because I'm sure if that lot across the street was an actual paved lot with plantings and stuff, it would get utilized much more than it currently. Well, it's not utilized at all right now because there's a big pile of dirt, but, you know, just maybe putting together some proposals and ideas. And even if they are something temporary, like what happened at the old city hall site with Shifsky's, I mean, they, they graciously donated that material and, and time to put that in. But it was, I think they kind of wanted to do some experimental work with that pervious pavement too to see how it holds up. So it was kind of a win-win for everyone, but I don't know. I mean, we haven't really designated a specific time to talk about that. But I don't know. I mean, is that something, we're all kind of on the same page that we need to address the parking issues and concerns and tell them?
I know that's, a big thing for the EDAs, the parking thing. You know, whether or not we, we probably could expand it from the EDA from not just, because right now on the radar is the one behind the old K&amp;J's. I mean, that's on the radar and you know, we can always expand that study to see what else is out there. We could definitely add that to the WSB finding.
Yeah, I think that just makes sense. Just to at least give us an idea of what kind of price range we're talking about. Maybe some of these other lots aren't as expensive and, and maybe they can get done sooner. And I don't know, but maybe just have like a plan for those parking lots, the current ones we currently have that need, what they need. The current ones we currently have that need, what they need and what the costs will be and maybe get some bids and some sort of schedule in place.
I think adding that to the EDA would be a good project for them. Good.
Okay.
Real good. Anything else?
No, I think, good.
Is there any? Andy?
No.
All right. If nothing else, motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilmember Thorson, second by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? Not all of us in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Meeting adjourned. Thanks, Leah.